Happy to be here tonight, God, and we thank you for the liberty and the freedom that we enjoy. God, we thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us today. And, Lord, we pray that we don't take anything for granted, God. And I pray that here tonight you would be with each board member. Lord, I pray that we would make decisions that would honor you and benefit our county. Lord, I pray for our citizens in attendance, and those that are not, I pray that you would bless them, I pray that you would prosper our county. And, Lord, I would also ask that, Lord, that you be with those that are there in Baltimore, Maryland, God, our law enforcement, and those that are adversely affected by what's going on. We pray for peace and stability. And, God, we bring all these things to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, please. We have a couple more commissioners on the way. They're running late. And we have one out of the state, and I think he's going to call in at some time. You're not there yet, are you, Commissioner Brown? Okay, he's going to be calling you. This time, we will have a public hearing. The county commissioners will take comments on the following issue: two zoning cases, Z-15 slash dash oh four and Z-15 oh five, and one zoning tax amendment case, ZTA 15 oh two, and to convey land into Gastonia Technology Park for an economic development project. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules and procedures for this hearing. Citizens wishing to make a comment will be recognized by the chair and then requested a step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the chair for response. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Fraley. All those in favor? Okay, we're now in public hearing. The commission will take comments on zoning case, Z-15 oh two. Benjamin Calvin Baumgartner is the applicant. Property parcel, 135850, located at 1005 Dallas Bessemer City Highway, Gastonia, North Carolina, from the RLD Residential Low Density Zoning District to the I-2 General Business District. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Sarah Pendley, Planning GIS Specialist, for her comments on this request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for the background information, and I'd like to simply highlight some of the points in this request. The first item for your consideration is rezoning application, Z-15 dash zero four. The applicant is Mr. Benjamin Calvin Baumgartner, who is present in the audience tonight. We have one parcel. It's under consideration, referenced again as parcel 135850. This property is located on the Dallas Bessemer City Highway, and the request, as you mentioned, is from RLD, the Residential Low Density Zoning District, to I-2 General Industrial District. The parcel, subject parcel, is approximately 2.4 acres. And if we can refer to the VZ here, just for general vicinity information, right here, highlighted in red, to show that this property is located in the southwest area of the county. And if we can move to the next image. The subject parcel is highlighted here in blue, and again, it adjoins the Dallas Bessemer City Highway and as well as Fairview Drive. This is just an aerial shot of the general vicinity. You've got the city limits of Gastonia back here with some industrial to the rear and adjoining the property. Moving on to our zoning map, this map will indicate and highlight the general zoning in this area. The subject parcel is highlighted with this hatch. It also adjoins the general I-2, general industrial zoning to the east, as well as this corner up here. You'll notice, too, that this property is adjoining the city of Gastonia as well, just for information purposes. The zoning here for Gastonia is I-2, which falls in line with the I-2 general zoning for the county. And our last shot there again is just a zoomed-out version of the zoning map districts in that area for the parcel. Again, the property is located in the southwest area of our comprehensive plan strategy map with consideration of the comprehensive plan goals and objections, objectives, sorry. It is the opinion of staff, the proposed map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The city of Gastonia was contacted with regards to the application, but no comments were provided. Staff did receive one call prior to the hearing for the purposes of general information only, and the caller did indicate that he supported the applicant's proposal. No further calls of inquiry or opposition have been received. Notices and advertisements were done in accordance with county policy, and this concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Pendley. Is there any citizens that wish to comment on this zoning change request? I see none. Okay. Any questions from the planning board? None. Any commissioner have a question? Okay, we will move on to the next request. The commission will take comments on zoning request, Z-15 oh five. Miranda Elizabeth Bridges, applicant, property parcel, 156744, located at 1324 Lewis Farm Road, Kings Mountain, North Carolina, from the RL, no, excuse me, that's R-1 Single Family Limited Zone District to the R-3 Single Family General Zoning District. Again, Ms. Pendley, will you bring us up to date on this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is rezoning application, 15 dash zero five. The applicant, Ms. Miranda Elizabeth Bridges, along with the property owner, Mr. John Raymond Bridges, both are present in the audience. For consideration is one parcel, referenced again as parcel 156744, and located on Lewis Farm Road. Their request is to, is from the R-1 Single Family Limited Zoning District to the R-3 Single Family General. The subject area contains approximately 18.73 acres.
I got this. She said the green cheese.
Again, if we can refer to our maps just for, to orient ourselves, this space here indicates where the property is located, in the southwest portion of our county. If we can move over clockwise, we've got an aerial photo that shows you the 18.73 acres to be considered for the rezoning request. Again, we have a zoomed-in zoning review map that highlights the parcel in question, along with the adjoining zoning. So right now, the property is situated and currently surrounded by the R-1 district. Zooming out to just our regular zoning district map, again, the subject property is highlighted here in blue, and you can see it's surrounded by the R-1 with some R-2 and R-3 districts indicated in the area. This property is located in the southwest area of the comprehensive plan strategy map with consideration of the comprehensive plan goals and objectives. It is the opinion of staff that the proposed map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So far, staff has received no calls for inquiry, complaints, or opposition prior to the public hearing. Notices and advertisements were done in accordance with county policy, and this concludes staff report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pendley. Do we have any citizen wishing to comment on this zoning change request? Seeing none. Any question from the planning board? Any commissioner question? Okay, I think we'll move on. The next is a tax amendment case, ZTA 15 dash oh one. And the commission will take comments on zoning tax amendment case, ZTA 15 oh one, amend UDO Chapter Definitions, Chapter Seven, uses and building lot standards, Chapter Eight, and supplement regulations in Chapter Ten, parking regulations. And Mr. Willie King, Community Development Planner, will make comments on this request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and members of the planning board. Also, Mr. Carpenter, just a question as to the two previous rezonings. Were those closed officially, closed, both cases officially? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, as you've already set us up as to tax amendment applications, ZTA 15 dash oh one, I will be very brief. But again, the proposals range from a few new uses, including bus charter, laser tag, and special event facilities due to development interest, to the adjustment of the use table to consider allowance of telecommunication towers, monopole type only, through a conditional use permit, public hearing in the R-1 Single Family Limited and R-2 Single Family Moderate Residential Districts due to demand interest to the tweaking of a few sections to bolster the ordinance. As I close, Mr. Chair, the proposals were advertised in accordance with county policy, and if approval occurs, the tax amendments will be effective throughout the entire Gaston County zoning boundary. And before I close, Mr. Chair, I would like to bring a correction to you and the board and the members of the planning board. In your packet, page two dash four, concerning section eight point, excuse me, 8.4.28B concerning special events facility, I just wanted to make you aware of it, the word "B" is left out, and the reading should be, "The building that houses the primary event center shall be called the primary structure," and on and on and so forth. So that's the, "Primary events," and it shall be called "The primary structure." Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, that concludes staff's report, and thank you.
Okay. Do we have citizens comment on this amendment change to our zoning? Seeing none. Any questions from the planning board? Any commissioner comment, question? Okay, at this time, I'm going to excuse the planning board to go to First Appearance Courtroom 2029 for deliberation. Next in our, hold on a minute. The next item, the commission will take comments on, comments on to convey land in the Gastonia Technology Park on the Gaston County for an economic development project pursuant to North Carolina general statutes, 158 dash 7.1, Project Samba. Is that the way we say that, Samba? Anyway, I'll ask Mr. Donnie Hicks, EDC Director, for comments. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm excited to be here tonight. As you know, we have the lowest inventory of available industrial buildings we've had in 30-some years. It's a good problem to have, but it also limits our ability to not only retain existing companies, but obviously to recruit companies, because we have a real shortage of buildings that they can locate in. We have a proposal from Maestro Investments to build a 50,000-square-foot building at the tech park, and I'll go through the proposal pretty quickly and show you where the building's at and show you the basic outlines and the terms. I can tell you that today, this is as clean a project as we can ever bring to you. We could bring other projects to you that are similar, but none of them that I think could be this clean in the way we've approached it, and it's very much a public-private partnership, mostly on the private side. I'll start out with showing you the location of the property. This is the Gastonia Technology Park. This is KRM, if you're familiar with them, Dixon Valve and Coupling. This is Rochling, the first tenant in the park. Repi, a company from Italy that built two years ago. At the end of the cul-de-sac, we have roughly 12 acres, and the proposal is to build the 50,000-square-foot spec building at the end of the road. This is a close-up view of the site. This is really the last site that we have in the park, and you can't see all that zoomed in. There's the end of the cul-de-sac, and the property runs all the way back to Long Creek. They've built a similar facility in Lincoln County and were able to sell it very quickly after construction, and that led them to come down and take a look at the Gastonia Technology Park. This is the building that was built in Lincoln County, and we anticipate that the building to be built in the GTP will be very similar. We have been working with Mr. Moore on this for about 30 to 45 days. We've asked for some flexibility even since we started working on the contract, because we have the opportunity maybe to do two buildings on that site. So the commitment is to probably build a 50, but that might change because we have a lot of interest. We had a conference call with the Canadian company that we'd love to have in the county on Sunday afternoon, and they need 30 expendable to 60. So we may end up with two buildings on that site, and in the contract, we're asking for that flexibility. I'll go over the basic terms of the proposal. Again, I think this is as clean as we could possibly make it. The company will purchase the plus or minus 12 acres from us for $160,000. That includes some area that is not buildable, so the buildable part of that 12 acres is roughly eight, but they're going to take the entire parcel. They won't pay for the parcel until one of three things happens, until the building's leased, sold, or 36 months, whichever comes first. So as soon as they lease the building, we'll have a closing, they'll pay us for the property. If they sell it, they're going to pay us for it. Before 36 months lapses and we haven't moved the building, then they have to pay us for the property. If debt's placed on the building shell or required for other purposes, we would subordinate our $160,000 payment to the lender. We also would provide them with a capital, a construction and progress investment grant. We did this for CTO Packaging. What that really means is that during the time the building sits there as the shell, as a building that we're using to attract companies to locate here, they will pay their taxes on the partially completed value, and we will return 100% of that value to them. That's largely an attempt on our part to encourage them to develop the spec building, predominantly with all private funding, and it also reduces its carry cost. If it sits there for 12, 18, 24 months, we don't want to build extra cost into it that they then have to recoup from the tenant. It allows us to compete against other buildings in Rock Hill and Cabarrus County. The city of Gastonia is scheduled to make that same agreement with them in early May. The building and all the outfit would have to meet the architectural restrictions that exist in the GTP. The owner must pay the common area maintenance charges. That starts when the property is conveyed to them for construction. We also have an economic agreement with them that will require that within 15 months of the execution of the contract, that construction on the shell is initiated, and it's just going to be a shell at this point. There won't be any outfit to it. It'll be basically four walls and a roof at that point, and that the building must be completed 12 months after the initiation of the construction of the shell. That doesn't mean the building has to be sold and outfitted, but once they start construction of the shell, the four walls and the roof, it has to be completed within 12 months. That's our proposal, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
And any question of any of the commissioners on this project? This is a spec building, and we've talked about it, doing it many other different ways, but this seems like a good process. Commissioner Price, you have something? Okay, no question.
I'd also like to recognize Mr. Pinocho Perez. He's here with me. He represents No Borders Consulting, and we've worked with him to bring the investment here. He also helped bring Dalton Dynamics to Gastonia.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it, sir. Okay, at this time, with no other, oh, excuse me, why? Excuse me. Any questions or comments by any citizen? Okay, we will move forward. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this project.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, a second, Commissioner Keger, and a second by Mr. Williams. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? You voted, didn't you, Tom?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
There's a quick one.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Okay, this concludes the public hearing for tonight. The board will like to thank each of you for your input. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Price votes to close it. Commissioner Keger, second. All those in favor? Okay, we're close. This closing, this concludes our, wait a minute, excuse me. At this time, I think, let me look at my agenda. We need to, for all of you, we're going paperless, and this is the first night that I'm using this little gadget. And considering my age, I hope you all will bear with me. I would like to, for the record, Ms. Buff, to indicate that Mr. Commissioner Keger entered the meeting during the public hearing, and I believe Commissioner Brown is on the phone. Is that right, Mr. Brown?
That is correct, gentlemen.
Okay, any comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you for joining us. Either way up in Michigan, I think. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Or there's any, one wanting to pull any of the consent agenda? Commissioner Keger.
I don't, I don't need to pull K. If I could just get a question answered by, I don't know who, involving the funds from municipalities, I guess that'd be Mr. Israel.
Mr. Israel, can you step to the podium, please, and answer Mr. Keger's question?
Again, I don't need to pull it. I just want to try to find out, how is it going with the municipalities as far as their match, and what's the participation?
The structure is such that the cities would have an opportunity to kick in. We're asking the, all the cities to cooperate. I haven't, I don't have a report on that as much as I'm letting the GGDC guys pretty much line that up. Most of the municipalities have been contacted at this point in time, I do believe, and if Mark may want to say something on that. Or Bob.
That's out of phase.
Not yet.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Bob Clay. I'm the chairman of the Greater Gastonia Development Corporation. As clarification, Commissioner Keger, what we have done at this point is we have presented the recommendation to the city of Belmont, which is a $25,000 ask, also the city of Mount Holly, a $25,000 ask. Tomorrow at noon, we are meeting with the majority of the balance of the smaller communities, asking them each for a $5,000 piece of the thing. And in addition to that, the private business community is committed to a $100,000 match. The city of Gastonia, we've been talking with the city manager, and he is working on a budget proposal for us, and we've told him that we'd be glad to come to their budget hearing to speak with them. So at this point, there are no other hard agreements, but so far, we've had excellent reception at all levels.
Okay. I just didn't know who they were yet or anything.
Sure.
And, well, that answers my question for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question?
I'm going to have to pull W.
Four W.
Right before X, Y, Z.
Four W. Is any other commissioner have any other, excuse me, let me get on the mic. Any other commissioner wishing to pull anything, any other agenda change? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with W. Paul.
So moved.
Commissioner Price made a motion to approve, and Commissioner Fraley, second.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carpenter.
You agree with approving the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I had to be coached on that one. All right, all those in favor, say, raise your hand. How do you vote, Mr. Brown?
Aye, yes.
Okay. Okay, the agenda is.
We've got to do the approval of the minutes.
Yeah, I got it here. The next item is to approve the minutes of a joint Board of Commissioners, Caremont Health Board of Directors Special Meeting on March 12, 2015, and a regular meeting on March 24, 2015. Those have been sent to you. I have a motion by Commissioner Fraley to approve. I need a second. Second by Commissioner Price. Mr. Well, all those in favor? Mr. Brown, you, you agree with the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I approve.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Now, at this time, we will have citizens recognition. Our next item is citizen recognition. A portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens an opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the commission and/or staff to answer any impromptu questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Comments will be limited to five minutes. the citizen sign up... Oh, the first citizen signed up to speak is Robert Kellogg. Mr. Kellogg here?
Good evening. My name is Robert Kellogg, and I reside at 1652 Lowell Bethesda Road in Gastonia. Tonight, I just want to address a couple of concerns I have concerning the resolution to extend health benefits to our, to any county commissioner who retires after four years of service. In the resolution, it says that "at your own cost," meaning that the insurance would be at your own cost, but I have to ask, how can it be at your own cost when it is subsidized by the taxpayers of Gaston County? Someone evidently and ultimately picks up the tab for covering the negotiated rate worked out between the P P O and the county. The county pays $322.65 for every individual, a county individual who chooses a P P O, $486.96 for every employee and spouse, and $586.47 for a family that chooses that coverage. Again, I ask, where is that money coming from? And I would have to say that it's coming from you and I. No major corporation offers such a service to part-time employees who retire after only four years of service. This is unheard of in corporate America. It is unheard of because of the unknowns. It's unheard of because rates change, and it's unheard of because the market for insurance changes. Therefore, corporate America chooses not to extend benefits of this kind to part-time employees, and if somebody here can name me a company that does, I would, I would really like to know that name of that company. If corporate America does not extend these benefits to part-time employees after only four years of service, why should our county government do the same for elected officials? Furthermore, how just is it to offer a perk to yourselves, elected officials, when it is not offered to other part-time employees working for the county? I'm sure social workers. I'm sure other employees who work for the county would love to have that offer to them, but they know that is not feasible, and they know that's not going to happen. Why should it be offered to you? This reeks of special treatment, and this is not what fairness or equity is about. My final concern is the way this whole issue was handled by the commissioners. Whether it is actual or whether it is an appeared, it appeared to be secretive and lacking in transparency. Amending the agenda a few hours before the meeting leaves little time for citizens to discuss, debate, and react to this controversial issue. In closing, please reconsider and vote no on this proposal. As elected officials, you serve not, you should not be above those you represent, nor should you be entitled to benefits that other county employees are not privy to. You are public servants, and servants being the key word. This goes against everything that most of you say you stand for: transparency, justice, fiscal responsibility, and refusing subsidies at the taxpayer's expense. Please vote no and side with the citizens and taxpayers of Gaston County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Next is Elizabeth, I believe that's New... Newkirk, I couldn't read. I'm sorry.
My name is Elizabeth Newkirk. My address is 2649 Independence Way in Gastonia, and I'm here to talk about the resolution for you folks, Gaston County commissioners, to obtain health insurance after you leave office. You will be voting on this resolution to obtain health insurance after you leave office at premium rates offered to current employees of Gaston County. These premiums are heavily subsidized. This benefit would cost Gaston County a minimum of $699.08 per month for each individual former commissioner. If they opt for family coverage, the subsidized amount would cost Gaston County $1,270.68 per month. These are the amounts taxpayers of Gaston County subsidize for working county employees. I am in favor of keeping this for the employees. I am not in favor of commissioners after they leave office to obtain this benefit. After they leave office, if this resolution passes, they could obtain these benefits for an indefinite period of time. This is a benefit that corporate America does not extend to employees once they leave the employ of their company. We don't know how many former commissioners will cumulatively take advantage of this very expensive benefit after they take, after they leave office. I urge a no vote on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newkirk. Next is Larry, is that Simons? Is Larry Simons here?
It's a privilege to be here, and it's a beautiful place to have a meeting, and it's a wonderful time, in the spring of the year, to have a meeting. And I just have a few things. I'd like to agree with the folks also that are saying that, you know, we shouldn't be paying for county commissioners' insurance, and I think the attorney, county attorney may want to say something as far as it being a conflict of interest, as far as, you know, doing something while you're in office, but maybe you're doing it for another one. I don't really understand, but I would also say no. But my main objective for being here tonight, I have two besides that. The county tax rate is 80, as we all know, is 87 cents, and we have duplication of services all over the county, especially with the county police department and the sheriff's department. We have, we are so fortunate to have a sheriff in Alan Klineger, and what a job he does and his staff. When you have a question or whatever, he answers it truthfully, and he has some of the, you know, greatest people, and we have to, all of citizens in Gaston County, we must admire them. And every time we see Mr. Klineger, we need to say, "Thank you, sir, for the great job you're doing." And also, we have a great county police department, don't get me wrong. But I had an encounter that I'm not very proud of, and I have talked with the, I've spoken with the police chief, Mr. Bowie. I've also talked with Mr. Mathers about an issue, and I also made it plain to Mr. Mathers that I was very upset that we had an incident happen in Lowell, North Carolina, to where, and I, and it's not something that I'm not proud of, but my wife and I were sitting at an intersection in Lowell in front of City Hall, and our police chief was in his own personal vehicle. Your county officer, and I don't know his name, it was car 483, was parked right behind him at a traffic light. The light was blatantly red. The police chief was, you know, texting, talking on the phone, he forgot where he was, and he drove, just taking, driven right on through the light. The county officer's sitting there. I blowed my horn, my wife and I both, you know, pointed at the traffic light, he drove right on in behind him, but the police chief pulled over, did what he was supposed to do, but the policeman didn't give him a ticket, or he didn't turn the blue light on or anything. But I, my wife and I drove up beside the car because, you know, it really upset me because this is, you know, we're all supposed to be held in high esteem. I'm not speaking as mayor of Lowell, I'm speaking as a citizen. And then whenever the police chief got out of his truck, walked up to the county policeman's window, he stuck his head in the window and said, "I may have ran a red light." And I spoke up and I said, "You did, Mark. You ran a red light, and you could have killed someone." He said, "You're right, sir." So, I let that be the end of it. I just want to go on record as saying that, you know, we have a lot of problems in policing now, and we don't need any more rift about it, and I'm not here to, you know, condemn anyone, ask anyone to be fired, terminated, whatever. But I do want people to understand this. I'm not in favor of the body cameras for police officers. I think it's an intrusion to the public. It's also an intrusion to the police officers, because number one, we have to trust our officers. That's number one. And we trust our commissioners, and we trust everyone in elected office, because we have to be held accountable for what we do. And whenever, and what my preference would be for this, that the county commissioners not, not belabor the fact of trying to get insurance for yourselves, but to try to do something, reduce this budget to where your children and grandchildren, just like my children and grandchildren, where they're going to reap, they're going to have all this money coming, you know, they've got to pay these high taxes and stuff that we have. In Gaston County today, we do not have a countywide sewer system. We do not have a countywide water system. We do not have countywide garbage pickup, but it's a shame that I, I want to tell you something. This is what really upset me today. I tried to get in touch with Bryant Morehead. I left two messages. I never got in touch with him. But Ms. Buff, you've been such a great help to me. I appreciate you. I think you do a great job. And I got some information that really startles me. We only have 364 square miles in Gaston County. The Gaston County Police Department has 149 employees with a budget of $14.1 million. The Gaston County Sheriff's Office has 214 employees with a 19 million, 19.6 million dollar budget, almost $33.7 million. The assets in the county is a total of $15.2 billion, which transfers into 270 million dollars in revenue. What do we, what, I mean, I know you can't answer questions like, but at a later time, I want to know, how much money do we owe as county taxpayers? How much money, you know, to the county commissioner? How much money do you owe? And how you can get these things paid off, whatever you owe? Because all this money you have in the bank getting less than 1% interest is not helping no one, but B B and T, whoever you bank with, they're proud of you. But what you need to do is put, you know, do a lot of hard work and study on this budget, just like I recommend for my board. We need to study. We need to work hard. We need to come up with something that's going to help all of us. We have a total of 15, 14 municipalities in Gaston County, and you deduct that from that 364 mile, square miles, you don't have much to please. But what we need to do is work together, and maybe the county can come up with the municipalities to where we can help you folks with the county, to where it doesn't cost so much to operate the county police department and the sheriff's department, but we all have to work together. But I didn't mean to come up here and upset the apple cart, but I do want things taken care of. And I think the county, the people, we deserve an answer when something goes wrong. But thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Next is James Carroll.
Thank you for letting me speak. My only question, and I understand you cannot answer questions, I understand that now because this is my first meeting. The insurance program, is it available to all part-time county employees?
Well, we'll have the manager respond to you on any questions you have.
That's my only question.
Okay.
Because you are part-time county employees.
Okay.
If it's for you, it's for every part-time county employee. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll, Mr. Carroll, could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, sir. Like I said, this is my first time.
No problem.
James Dale Carroll, 4608 Oakwood Circle, South Point Township.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Consent agenda.
Our next item is the consent agenda.
We did it.
You've already voted?
No, 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 no. We just voted on the agenda, and we pull W.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. Our next item is non-consent matters. Has the zoning board came back with a recommendation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Let me get it in the right order here. Item one is zoning map change Z 1504. The applicant, Mr. Bumgarner, the planning board has recommended approval with a unanimous vote on that request.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Item number two.
Is zoning map change Z 1505, applicant Miranda Bridges, and the planning board has recommended approval on that, also on a unanimous vote.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Item number three.
Item three is the zoning text amendment, Z T A 1501, and the planning board has recommended approval of those modifications with, also with a unanimous vote.
Motion to approve.
Motion, excuse me. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter. I'll second that. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. I think we're on item B.
Item B is a reset on the zoning map change request, Z 1503, of Benfield, Eli Benfield and Speedway Machine Works. The planning board has recommended approval of that request on a seven to two vote.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes six to one. Commissioner Keger voting no. Our next item, yes, our next item is a budgeting, excuse me, is to approve the purchase of six 2015 Dodge Charger V8 police package sedans for the sheriff's office in the amount of $1,882, $182,038, including equipment decaus tax, tax title, et cetera. I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
I will make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion on this matter?
Yes, I'd like to discuss that, because we've had previous discussion on this, and we didn't approve it, but we pulled it. I'm not yet, and I hadn't had all my questions answered about the use of these vehicles and just the need of the number of vehicles that the sheriff has. And so, I'm not ready to approve these till I get those answered. I think of, I would, not singling out the sheriff, but all of the vehicles in the county, I would like to, like for us to take a look at that in some form to make sure that we're getting the best use out of them and that we're not excessive with the use of any of the vehicles, whether it's the sheriff, the county police, or D S S, or health department, or anybody.
Any other discussion on this matter? Commissioner Price?
Yes, sir, thank you. I, I do know that across the state, there are a variety of mixture of cars used in municipalities and county government. I'm in, I do think these vehicles that we need to replace are in need of replacement because they meet our criteria for, for their usage. But I, I do think we need to have a, I guess, a review or someone, if it's not our county manager, somebody to look at who has vehicles and what type of vehicles. I don't think all our county vehicle cars need to be V8s, and I'm speaking mainly of V6s and some other economic value to having whatever the person is doing in their position needs to be looked at. So, I don't know if that needs to be done before we approve these cars, because evidently these six that we're looking at do need, do meet the criteria for replacement. So, if we want to, want to do these tonight and then do the review, if we want to do the review and then issue the cars, I'm okay the way. So, but that's, I just think we need to look at who's got a car, why, if they need one, and what can they do most economically to use a car? That's my feeling.
Commissioner Fraley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't totally disagree with Commissioner Price, especially in the long run. We need to do a lot, a little more research and determine which way to go in the future, but as far as these cars, you know, the manager... But as far as these cars, uh, you know, the manager, you know, originally talked to the sheriff, and, uh, it looked like maybe these cars weren't needed after discussion. I think he convinced our manager the cars were needed. Would you agree with that, Earl? And, uh, I think there was a compromise made to go from the more expensive car down to the Charger. So in this case, I feel like we've, uh, can move forward, and I'm ready to support this, this action. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye. A raising of hand. Any opposed? If I'm correct, it was six to one Commissioner Carpenter dissenting.
Jay?
Yes. It was an aye with an echo.
Okay.
He tried to vote twice.
Our next item is item W. It was pulled from the consent agenda. Give me just a second. Yes, uh, this is a resolution to allow Gaston County commissioners to purchase at their own cost, health insurance coverage after they leave office. Uh, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? I'll make just a few comments, and then we'll vote. First, I want the public to know that over a month ago, uh, this was not something that was done in secret, uh, over a month ago, in this room, on TV, um, our county manager brought the subject to the board and discussed it. Also, I want to list a number of counties that some may think, well, this is just something Gaston County made up, or came up out of the blue. Uh, there was even a, um, email from the Democrat Party saying, stop your Republicans from doing this. But when I read off this list, most of these are even Democrat counties. Orange County, you're allowed to get health insurance as a commissioner after leaving office. Buckham County, after leaving office. Guilford, after leaving office. Cumberland, uh, after two terms and pay the full cost after serving a minimum of 10 years and able to retire Johnson. After serving 12 years, Pitt. Granville, three terms, uh, and they pay the employee rate. Davidson pays one-third of the premium, and the county pays two-thirds of the premium. And Cleveland County, our nearest neighbor, after four years, commissioners have access to the county pharmacy and the wellness clinic if they've elected coverage while in office. So this is, this is not something the commission just thought up out of the blue. Uh, this is actually very, very normal across the state of North Carolina. Um, and that is why I'm going to support this action. Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed?
I do have a comment now.
The vote is over, okay?
Okay.
Hold one second. Did you vote against?
No. I voted for.
The motion is unanimous. Commissioner Keger.
I just want to say that when I came in this evening, uh, while I did have all intentions of pulling it, I wasn't going to discuss it much. I just didn't feel comfortable voting for it. But after hearing this and having a couple more chats, uh, late this afternoon, uh, I, I think one thing we look at is that the time and effort we put in, uh, often we're putting in 40, 60 hours a week, some weeks 20, 30. It's not like we're busy constantly, but there are times that we're working overtime. We're not doing it for a paycheck, but let's face it, uh, somebody off the street, somebody that doesn't have a decent income, it's getting to be almost impossible to run for any elected position today. And many of us, speaking for myself personally, when we first got into this for years until we figured it out, we lost an awful lot of money in our personal endeavors because of the time that we were required to learn this job. I had all intentions of voting against it till about 15 minutes ago, because I just couldn't justify it. But after hearing the various counties, which I just saw at the beginning of the meeting, uh, and I'm sure if we had time, I think that was put together around 4:30 today, we could find many more counties. But Gaston County commissioners, uh, we receive, if we broke it out hourly, I'd be surprised after taxes if it was much more than five or $6 an hour. We don't get the kind of remuneration that counties around us and nationally get. We don't. And we're not asking for more, but it's tough when it costs you some years more to hold the position, and you're trying to raise a family and do what the people are asking you to do, putting in the time and effort. Uh, I don't think any of us put in to do this job to lose, or, you know, to lose money to become financially, uh, less than where we were. I, I know I sound like I'm going on, and I am, but I really was not going to vote for this. But I, in my mind, I can totally justify it now, and, uh, I hope the public understands that we don't get the pay that our employees get, you know? What's average pay in an employee in this county? 50? If you take the average $46,000, we get a fourth of that maybe. And we put in a lot of work, and we probably, uh, put, take on a lot more stress than many of the employees. Uh, there are a lot of employees, law enforcement, social services, health department, that understand stress. But, uh, I, in no way ashamed that I changed my opinion this evening and voted for it, and, uh, I hope the public at whole can understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keger. Our next item is appointments. We'll begin with Commissioner Fraley.
I gotta get my, uh, iPad to the right point here.
Oh, is it over here? Where is it?
Go to the on cloud and pink sheets and then hit your name. But I gotta get there first.
The way he's looking, I'll second it.
Okay, I have two reappointments tonight, Mr. Chairman. Transportation Advisory Board, reappointment of Charity Patterson. Transportation Advisory, uh, Board, Claudette Argabright.
Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Brown?
About this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Price?
I'm still looking. Where is it?
While he's waiting, Commissioner Williams.
If you just look on the consent, uh, the agenda and hit it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got three. Housing Appeal Advisory Board, Britt Goodrich. Transportation Advisory Board, Angela Karchmer. Transportation Advisory Board, Terry Sanford.
Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Price?
I have one. Mr. Ron Loftus, reappointment to the Travel and Tourism Board. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Carpenter?
I haven't asked these, it's terms of expiring. Lee Anne, do you wish to continue to serve on the Family Advisory Board? Okay. Will I make, uh, that, uh, motion to approve Lee Anne McMillan to the, uh, Family Advisory Board?
I'll second that. Any discussion? Is that all?
I've got the other.
He's got some other ones. Go ahead. Want to go them all at one time?
Yeah. Economic Development Commission, term expiring, Mr. Jeff Booker, I'll repoint him. Uh, the term expiring from the Sarah Local Planning Committee, uh, Mr. Tim Goss, and the Transportation Advisory Board, Karen Watts. And did Deborah Alley say that she wanted, did she resign? She resigned from that, so I don't need to reappoint her to the Transportation Advisory Board.
We haven't, they didn't, they, 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 they.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold on that one anyway. That's all.
Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter. I seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Commissioner Keger.
Sounds like a sailor. Aye, aye. Uh, I'd like to, uh, fill the position left by Dennis Noble, the school's athletic director, by his predecessor, Chad Duncan, to the Parks and Rec Board, and, uh, Mr. Jeff Lowry to the Personnel Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion is unanimous. I have one, a Mr. Bill Dillinger Jr. for the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. This time, we'll have the county's managers brief report.
Thank you, uh, for this brief opportunity, Mr. Chairman. And I will be relatively brief, at least. Uh, I did want to mention a couple of things. It was really an honor for me, uh, in the past month or so to participate in the Proud of its Kid in Gaston County competition. It was really gratifying to see the, the quality of, of young people that we have in Gaston County. And I also wanted to mention that, uh, the comprehensive land use planning process is off to a great start, and, uh, I'm really excited about that, inasmuch as it, well, really, I believe, capture some broad-ranging perspectives on where we're going in the future in Gaston County. I'm excited also about the, uh, high level of economic development activity that we're seeing right now, both industrial and commercial, residential, uh, everything you, you can think of is, is, uh, is going on in Gaston County right now, and that will be great in terms of helping us to, to work out of this slight hole that we're in budget-wise, uh, at the present time. Speaking of budget, it's coming together pretty well. Uh, Mr. Morehead has, uh, been doing, uh, some great work in terms of, uh, finding ways that perhaps we can, can save a little bit of money to, uh, to balance our budget, and that's, that's terrific. Now, the one thing I really wanted to focus on just a little bit this evening is, uh, is animal control. As you know, uh, we're moving forward with the process of acquiring a new facility, and it's desperately needed. As we, uh, purchase this property, get a, uh, conditional use permit from the city of Gastonia to, uh, move forward with the, with the renovation, the design and renovation of that facility into a, a new animal control property, uh, we're going to be able to take our programming to the next level. But this is an area in which Gaston County, uh, receives a lot of criticism, and I personally field a lot of that, and I know that the commissioners, uh, catch, uh, some of this flack as well. And it's been particularly heated recently due so, to some, uh, events that have occurred. But, you know, I want to, uh, say publicly that we have made great progress in the development of our animal control programs. We have a long way to go. We would be the first to admit that. But we've been introducing some positive changes, and in particular, I think hiring Dr. Christine Blankenship, uh, as our new Director of Animal Control was a tremendous step, uh, ahead for, for the county. And I just hope that we can retain her services. Having that caliber of professional at the helm really can make a huge difference in tandem with, uh, the development of a new state-of-the-art, uh, facility, which we've desperately needed for many years. So I, I had to make that statement in support of our, our programs because I think we really are making progress despite some of the criticism that we continue to receive. Thank you very much.
Our next item is the county attorney's report.
No report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This concludes your meeting.
Ma'am, moment.
Commissioner Price needs a moment.
I attended the DHS's meeting this month, and I attended Gaston Family Health Service if we didn't do committee reports. But anyway, what I, what I wanted to say was, uh, in, I, I want to also speak in support of Ms. Blankenship, our new animal control director. Uh, I think she's made great progress over there. I think some of the, um, things she's not able to do is based upon the ability of the facility, not her, but in my conversation with her, I think that, uh, I have the feeling that she doesn't want to have to put down or euthanize any, any animal, dog, cat, whatever. But, uh, I do think some of the criticism has been unfair, and not all the information has come out that, that has been stated in the emails. And the one that I'm speaking of is the, over the last couple of days, was about an, an individual dog that, uh, was put down, but the people who were going to rescue the dog didn't show up. So when the facility becomes crowded or overcrowded, we either have to put dogs down or cats to keep in compliance with the quantity of, uh, animals that we're allowed to keep. If we do go over, we're in jeopardy of getting fined by the state. So I think Ms. Blankenship has done a great job, and I, uh, continue to support her 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Price, for inviting me of committee reports. Commissioner Fraley, do you have any reports?
Uh, none, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to say I agree with what Mickey just said, and, uh, I, I, I hope that, uh, we can continue to improve things there, but I think we've come a long way. And, uh, I think a lot of these emails that we get, and we've been pounded, or I have lately, and I think y'all have too, are people that, from out of state, out of town, and that really don't know all the facts. They just jump on board, and, uh, I think we've made great strides, and I think we'll get a new facility. We'll continue to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown, do you have any reports?
I think he has left the building.
No, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I attended the Caramont Retreat this weekend. Uh, we had, uh, some good dialogue. We had a facilitator come in and, uh, go over some things that, that we needed to continue to do, and some things that we needed to do better. Uh, but really, at the end of the day, after the, the retreat was over, I think we, uh, really came up with some good ideas to strengthen our independence and, uh, continue to provide hot, quality healthcare here in, uh, Gaston County and into this community. Also, uh, just another reminder of the May 16th, uh, uh, community, uh, event out at Stuart Kramer, everything from a 5K to the One Mile Fun Walk, other entertainment. So I hope, uh, the, this board and the citizens will try to make it out to that. It should be a, a very good event. Last year was very good. Commissioner Philbeck spoke at the event, and, and we had a really good turnout, so we're hoping for even better this time. Uh, just to kind of touch on what, what they've already said, Dr. Blankenship, uh, really inherited a pretty difficult position, and the fact is, that's, that's just a difficult position regardless. Uh, I do want to say that I think a lot of the criticism has come from special interest groups that aren't interested in sharing all the facts. They're more interested in stirring up emotions, and I think we need to stand by our staff and let them know that we support what they're doing, as long as what they're doing is what they're supposed to do. And so, uh, Mr. Mathers, if you'll share that with Dr. Blankenship, that we appreciate the hard work she's doing, and, uh, as, as has been said before, once we get that facility up and running, that's going to really help out with a lot of these issues. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Well, let me add my, uh, support for Dr. Blankenship also. Uh, and I've received some of these emails, and I know that they're not completely accurate in their acquisition, acquisition. Uh, so, uh, I, I really support her and appreciate the job she's doing. Uh, I will say that, uh, in reference to Commissioner Keger's, uh, dialogue about healthcare... I will say that in reference to Commissioner Kegger's dialogue about healthcare, I support that for Commissioners, although I won't be using it because I'm already passing age to work. I don't participate in that. I got another, it's called Medicare and Supplement. But I think Commissioners serving on this board deserve a vote of thanks from the citizen of this county, because some of them might not spend forty hours, but I spend at least that much. And my next report is, all day yesterday and today, I went to Raleigh and back, and I was up there for a meeting of the NC Tamara Building Communities, which is a rollout, is a summit on our over-two-years of study of what we need to do within the regions of this state. There are sixteen councils of government, and this is rolled out, and we had representatives over two hundred from across the state participating in this, and we had some great presenters presenting the information. But it basically covers four key things that we need to focus on in our communities, and it is to leverage the resources that you have within your community and make the best use of them, and to leverage that in the marketplace. We have, and each region has different resources. We have great manufacturing and other industry here, but some of them are farming communities, and some of them are travel and tourism, along the coast and the mountains, and look to leverage and do the best use of those resources that you have. And also is to keep a good infrastructure, and that infrastructure covers a lot of things, you know, transportation or water sewer and all, but the one that's really facing us today is the Internet. And if you don't get the, I'd call it a super-fast Internet in your community, especially where the businesses are coming in, especially international businesses we are attracting and the people that work in there, we might not be competing, or we might lose a good prospect because we don't have it. Now, Mr. Hicks has done a very good job with a certain type of Internet out in the tech part and others, but they're coming online with stuff that's much faster. And the other part is keeping and creating good vibrant communities. And you recognize in Gaston County, especially on the east side, Belmont, Mount Holly, Creamers, they're doing a real good job, but they're doing things in other parts of the county. I know Dallas is very much at work on trying to revitalize, and they have a lot of historic history, and there's a lot of that, and there's a bill being circulated through the legislature, and the House has already approved, to approve the incentives for historic property restoration. And if you got any contacts with Senators, we need to try to get them off of that issue and support it, because the Firestone Mill or the Low Ray Mill down here is a big example of what can happen, and we have several others, some of our old schools in the community that have been refurbished, and they add to the life of our community, economic life, and serving a lot of good people in those facilities. And then the last, and we continue to focus on it in this community, and that is to develop and help create talented and innovative people. Gaston College is doing a wonderful job. Belmont Abbey does a wonderful job, and other institutions, educational institutions. But we've got to get the message out to those students coming along that a high school education very much limits their ability to get a very good-paying job. And if they get a good-paying job, they're going to need at least an associate degree or maybe a certificate in certain fields like welding and machining, which we have over at Gaston College. We just expanded that facility, and we're right at the point of adding the advanced manufacturing facility. And that's the kind of education or training that these industry need. We've got to match their education and training up with the job and those skills. So when I looked at the information that we'd put together, and this is bottom-up, we'd been from all the regions in the state, and then looking at this and saying, what do we need to do to create successful communities? And that's where it's come from. I used the illustration that someone had said, is that, and I challenged the group up there with it, that this that we have is a great vision for our state and our regions. But someone said that a vision without action is daydreaming, probably laid on a shelf. But the opposite of that's true. Action without a vision may be a nightmare. So we need to go with the vision that we have, and we are already applying it through our Council of Government in many of the efforts that we're doing. And I look for everybody to join in and make this something that every region in this state can become a best region. Maybe not the best, but a best region, the best we can be. So I was really excited about the rollout of this, and I hope that we can focus on it as we move forward. And it really centers around some of the things that we're already doing on this priority-based budget. You know, we're going to put our resources where we get the best benefit. And I'll shut up.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Kegger?
Well, in the spirit of good fun, and since Mr. Carpenter, the last few months, has poked a lot of fun at me, let me wake everybody up now. I will, just very briefly, Parks and Rec meeting Monday evening, Monday last night? Couple interesting things. Number one, first and foremost, the senior games will start April 20th and run through early May. And for those that love their dogs, they have the Just Playing Dog Show coming up Sunday, this Sunday, May the third. And those of you with little ones, the Kids Fishing Day at Poston Park is May 16th. The additional parking that we've been looking at getting done at Poston Park has been awarded Cedar Hill grading, and they will start on that. And I just want to point out something that we don't see often, just to let you know how valuable and how much usage our parks get. Just in March alone, in the Gaston County parks, almost 1,000 reservations were made by groups, almost 973, just in March, and March isn't a great month sometimes. The Senior Center had over 3,300 visits, and almost 1,600 people walked the Poston Trail. 3,000 people visited the Poston Dog Park. So, I mean, there are just some numbers people generally don't hear, but I just thought I'd point that out. The Parks and Rec Board also entertained a presentation by Forsight Development. They're a very successful company that buy properties that, for one reason or another, no one wants, and they've purchased the old Cronkitt Knolls Chemical Plant right before you would get to Poston Park on the right, and they'll be making a presentation here, I think. The Parks and Rec Board voted to support our county's staff to move forward to bring more information to us. Mr. Carpenter and I attended the presentation of the Gold Lee Foundation at the Farr Industrial Trade Building, believe it was a half million dollars, and they'll be looking for another half million dollars. And I just want to piggyback on something Mr. Carpenter said. I want to be clear on the vote that we took on the health insurance for Commissioners. I, too, will be, I'm nowhere near as old as Joe, okay? I mean, just look at us. But I will be of Medicare age. Good Lord lets me live to the end of this term. So it's something that I also thought, from my heart and from sense, was something that we need, just one of these little tiny perks that would allow people to run for office and not deter them, because, you know, they don't want to lose finances to do something like this. But anyhow, I hope everybody has a good week. I will not, I'm going to come by Thursday. We have a dinner with the boards, with the county-appointed chairs, and I'm going to represent the board at the open at the Nuendo Center, which they're having their ribbon-cutting grand opening and all that, but I'm going to come by and greet the folks and be late going to the other thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Kegger. I'll just say a quick few words. Sorry, I do not have a towel. I was a little late getting here.
It's Jason's excuse.
It's Jason's excuse. Also, Commissioner Carpenter, thank you for running the meeting in my absence. With that said, this concludes our meeting for tonight. Our next work session is May the 12th. Our next regular meeting is May the 26th at 6:00 PM at the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Forum Courthouse. I'm going to stop because I do have one thing. I would like to tell Michael Barrett, if I'm correct, you got married here recently? You been on a honeymoon? I just want to say congratulations. If everybody wants to give Mike a hand for getting married.
There you go.
And now, the other side of that, I'm glad the Gazette finally shows up at one of our meetings. If you'll notice, all the real important work we do, they are never around, but if there's a story that we can make a headline, they show up. So I have to give you both sides of that, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Mike's my friend.
Until tomorrow.
And Ms. LeAnn McMillan is also here. She sits on the Board of Elections. She just recently lost her husband, a fine gentleman that I've got to meet several times, and just wanted to honor you and your husband. With that said, thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Spectacular Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. This time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.